Just tap the red light. Kenya, you're still off. Okay.
Got it.
Good evening and welcome to Stanhope's Board of Education meeting on October 19th, 2022. I'd like to welcome all sitting here with us tonight and all those at home viewing our first broadcast of our board meetings. We are attempting to make this an event for every board meeting that we now have going forward and any special events that we may have at the school, including our Veterans Day, which we hope to broadcast on November 9th. At this point, will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Choquette.
Right here.
Mr. Clausen.
Here.
Mrs. Harold.
Yes.
Mrs. Percarpio.
Here.
Mr. Valley.
Here.
Mrs. Scharfstein.
Here.
Mr. Moscatello.
Here.
Mr. Hageman.
Here.
Mrs. Finklio Di Cataldo.
Here.
Next is our Sunshine Law Statement. This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that within the compliance of Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meeting Act. Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the Office of Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the Municipal Clerk of the Borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. Mission Statement: The Stanhope School District will provide a diverse and challenging educational environment that encourages individual initiatives, forces success through teamwork, promotes accountability, demonstrates a passion for educational excellence, and ensures student achievement related to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The Stanhope School District is committed to the development of our students and staff so that individual aspirations can be achieved through their lifelong learning. This was an ed, an addition, a late addition to our agenda, and that is there will be an executive session after the second public session tonight. And the executive session announcement, and an executive session will be held for the purpose of business. The board will enter executive session immediately after public session number two. Formal action may be taken. We have several presentations tonight, so we will now start those. Mr. Hageman?
Thank you. Before I begin the first of three presentations, I just wanted to take a moment, ask everybody who's listening and watching at home. We would appreciate feedback as we can't see what you're seeing right now. This will be a work in progress, but I wanted to sincerely thank Mr. Lalama for working to get this equipment running and seeing our vision through. The Board of Education for their support in allowing us to use the funds for this equipment, which we hope and expect to use beyond our Board of Education meetings. And, you know, as a reminder, this was purchased through the federal grant for the COVID funds, the ESER money. So exciting equipment, and we didn't have to use any money from our initial budget from the tax levy. So we're super excited about that. The first of the three presentations will be brief. This is our annual HIV Self-Assessment. Each year, we are expected and asked to assess ourselves or to grade our public school in our efforts in implementing the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights law from the previous school year. So this most recent self-assessment is ultimately grading ourselves for the 2021-2022 school year. The core elements that are measured are HIV programs, approaches, and other initiatives, training on the Board of Education-approved HIV policy and procedures, other staff instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIV and related information and skills, HIV personnel, school-level HIV incident reporting procedures, HIV investigation procedure, and the last and the eighth HIV reporting. I'm happy to share that as we have, we've been scoring pretty well on this. Mrs. Coppola accumulates and tracks the trainings, the programs, the initiatives that we put forth throughout the school year, and that's what we use to grade ourselves. So we have all of the documentation to support our claims. And we have scored on this assessment 75 total points out of a possible 78 points. So again, it's a self-assessment. It's not that anybody's come in and audited our processes, but we feel pretty confident that we are reporting as we should, investigating as we should, training our staff, and preparing our students to understand the law. Any questions from the board on the HIV Self-Assessment? Okay. All right. So here comes the tricky part for me, where I have to try to present to the board, live audience, and people that are watching our broadcast. So if you don't mind me coming around, the first of the two presentations that I'm getting up for here will be on our state test results from last year. And we're gonna go to the first. Okay, so as most of you are aware, we are required federally to engage in state, every child to engage in state assessment during the school year. Most students will take the NJSLA, which is an assessment that's for language arts, math, and specific grade-level science. Students with significant disabilities will take the DLM, and students who are learning English as a second language will take the access for Ls, which are all three state assessments that I'm going to report on tonight. Last year, 2022, marked the first year that we performed the NJSLA here at our school since the COVID health pandemic. Previously, the last time was in the spring of 2019. This past year was the sixth administration of a computer-based test. Prior to the computer-based test, these were all handwritten and hand-scored tests. Obviously, it took much longer to get results. So the fact that the kids are taking it on a computer is much better. It allows us to get results sooner, analyze the data, and make adjustments to how we work with our kids and teach in the classroom. Students in grades 3 through 8 took the English Language Arts NJSLA. Through 3 through 8 took the math, and then the math then becomes course-specific. So in addition to 3 through 8, we had students this year, or last year, taking the Algebra I course. And students in 5, 8, and 11 took the Science Assessment. The five levels for language arts and math for the NJSLA are as follows. Science only has four levels to measure proficiency. Level 1 did not meet expectations. That's the lowest level. Level 2, partially meeting expectations. Level 3, approaching expectations. 4 is meeting expectations, and 5 is exceeding expectations. Levels 4 and 5 at the bottom here are the two levels that are considered proficient. So if a student scores in a level 4 or a level 5, that is how you determine your proficiency percentage, which is a number that I'm going to show you shortly. Please stop me if you have any questions. This is a bit of a complicated breakdown of how our students scored on all five levels as compared to the state. As you remember, there are two comparisons that I used to do when presenting this data. One was to the state. I think that's a really good benchmark because these tests are different. So when we compare our numbers to the numbers of the state, our goal should be to outperform the state as much as possible. The second number that we used as a comparison was comparing students in specific cohorts. So we would compare a student, let's say their third-grade scores against the state, then compare that same cohort's fourth-grade scores against the state to determine if we're making growth against the state. So if we had the same score as the state in the third-grade cohort, and then in fourth grade, we outperformed the state by 10 percentage points, that to me demonstrates that we are growing these students from year to year. If we are decreased, let's say we're then 10 points below the state, that is a concern that, you know, we would want to address. So if you can see up here, level 1, I don't think you can see my pointer very well. It's dying. 5 is the best. 4 is also proficient, and it goes to 3, 2, and 1. And this is for language arts. This next slide, I think, will give you a much better representation overall on how we did with proficiency. As you can see, third grade was a bit of a struggle. I think I spoke to this at the board level a couple meetings ago. I was not surprised that our lowest scores were in third grade if you consider the fact that these students had four years of education, and three of them were interrupted by the pandemic. So that's the one area, as we expected, and it seems to be proven through these scores, that we were expecting learning gaps. Obviously, we have lots of programs in place, summer programs, after-school programs, our RTI program to help remediate and help these students regain the learning that they lost during the pandemic in more of all form. We're excited that we're going to see some progress here. From grades 4 through 8 in language arts, otherwise you can see that in here there, the plus 20 to the right for fourth grade means that we outperformed the state by 20%. 69% of our fourth graders were deemed proficient for the 4 or 5 against the 49%. And then as you go down this scale, you can see grade 5 outperformed the state by 17%, grade 6, 4%, grade 7, 27%, and grade 8, 4%. Questions before I go on to math? Okay. So again, here's the breakdown of levels 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 for mathematics. A couple things to note. For grade 8 math and algebra math, those are all primarily made up of 8th grade students with a couple exceptions for students who were advanced and took an algebra course in 7th grade. The 8th grade students are just under half of our 8th grade population, and we have traditionally, and we expect to see lower scores for that age group because, again, you're taking the higher-performing kids in that age group and you're placing them into the algebra course. So in turn, although we typically see much lower scores in 8th grade, we see much higher proficiency levels in algebra. So as you can see, 32% of our algebra kids scored at that top level. So as I pull up the math proficiency scores, you can see that grade 3 again was an area in which we struggled, which we expected. And again, we're trying to work together with those kids to make sure that we can remediate. The two areas where we struggled, the two other grade levels where we struggled here are grade 6 and, as expected, grade 8. We're currently working, you know, not only with the students, but we have a math consultant that we've brought in for several years now, who's going to take a deep dive at these scores with our math teachers when she comes next month to identify what areas, what content areas, we need to focus on. The NJSLA does break down major content, supporting content, and different areas of math, and it can tell you where your students performed well and where your students needed a little extra work. And we feel as though if we focus on those, if we accentuate the areas where we did well, and we put a greater focus on the areas where maybe we didn't do as well, we're hoping to see these scores increase for next year. But again, it's the first time in several years that we've taken this test. I'm overall very happy with our language arts and our math scores, and I do expect to see some growth over the next year. Our science scores, both science assessments did outperform the state. As you can see, the science scores across the state were very, very low. Again, brand-new test, don't really have much to compare to. We're excited to see how the kids perform next year, though. So 5th grade outperforming the state by 3%, and 8th grade outperforming the state by 5%. As required and as expected, we need to also report on specific demographics within our school. I can't report on every demographic because if we don't have 10 tested students in a demographic, we are not able to report for fear that it might identify a specific student in the school. So these are the demographics where we had at least 10 students tested. As you can see, you can compare how the students fared across that scale. Questions before I move on?
Yeah, just that percentage up there are those of the kids in those groups who were proficient.
For all grade levels. Because if I did it by individual, if I did it by individual grade levels, we wouldn't have enough students to report. So what I did, I did some manual calculations, and I calculated all students, all grade levels, within those categories in all the subjects. Okay? The Dynamic Learning Maps is a test that probably is, people are less familiar with. This is an assessment for students who don't take the NJSLA. The reason in most cases they don't take the NJSLA is because they have significant cognitive delays and are identified through special education. This assessment is instructed in the classroom and assessed in the classroom on essential elements. They're grade-level specific, and they're tailored to the students' needs and what they're actually covering within their class. It does focus on college and career-ready, although this is a test for students who do have those delays. Again, we've only, I think we only had six students in our school take this assessment last year, so there's no assessment data that I can report on. And the next assessment that I wanted to discuss is our access for ELLs. ELLs are English Language Learners. These are learners who typically speak English as a second language. Some arrive to our school from another country. Some were born here, however, at home, English is not the primary language that they speak, so there's, it's expected that there's going to be delays when they enter the classroom. Students need to be identified as an English Language learner through an assessment, and once identified, they'll take the access for ELLs each year. Students need to score in a range of 4.5 at least in order to then qualify out of the program. This past year, we had two students score 4.5 or higher, and we're in the process of them graduating out. And for most of these students and for these families, that's a pretty big deal. Being able to, you know, most of these numbers that you see are level 1, 2, and 3, those are our students who are at the lower grade levels, kindergarten, first, and second grade. As they immerse into our English-speaking classrooms and as we support them through our ESL program, we definitely see their proficiency levels increase, and it is a big deal when they're able to test out. Any questions on the data that we have here? Okay. So some questions, some basic questions that we ask after these assessments, and not just us, all schools. How are we going to use this data to identify strengths and identify learning gaps in our existing curriculum and in the instruction that we have here in the school? How will we use the data to address areas that are need of improvement and enhancement? And how can we provide additional resources to support our teachers and support our students so that we can use these scores to demonstrate growth, to demonstrate that we're doing everything we can to support them? And how can we best individualize instructions to meet the needs of these students? So a couple things. In addition to the NJSLA data, we use specific benchmark data here at the school. We have teacher-created assessments. We have, we use the Lincoln Benchmark Assessment, and that is, those are just additional sources of information to help us determine where they're at and what they need within their programming. Our RTI program uses various assessments to determine exactly what's the kids' need, but also, once they've mastered a skill, to help them graduate from that program and, again, go back into that general education setting. A lot of supports are also provided within the classroom through RTI. We use this information as a piece of the data to figure out the impact that the pandemic had on our students. There's been an impact on our teachers as well. You know, not being able to do what you've done for so many years and then having to revert back to it, obviously, there's that learning curve. There's that getting back to what we used to do, and that's something that we're working through right now. And I feel pretty confident that we're almost, we're as close to normal as we can possibly be right now. We're very close. The data that we collect is used to drive the instruction. Again, we drill down for specific students in most cases. What did this student struggle with? What did they do well? What do I need to do during that remediation time to make sure that they better understand the scaffolding instruction, the information, the prerequisites that they need to know before they can master a more advanced skill? We need to provide specific professional development to teachers, not only on pedagogy and how to teach, but also within content. We had our reading and writing workshop consultant in yesterday, working with our reading and writing teachers. And as I mentioned previously, we have our math consultant coming in next month for several days to work with all of our math teachers, general education and special education, from kindergarten all the way up through algebra. Additional training. We believe heavily in professional development, but not just PD, relevant and engaging PD. We have five professional development days built into our schedule. The Flexible Professional Development Initiative that we were able to negotiate with the association, we feel has been very successful. This is the teacher's opportunity to identify webinars, trainings, any type of professional development outside of their contractual hours, outside of the day, and they'll be able to get credit with those hours for, towards two days of professional development where they wouldn't necessarily have to come to the school. So our last two days of professional development are scheduled after the student's last day, and if you fulfill those 12 Flexible Professional Development hours as a teacher, you don't have to come in for those two days. Not only is that a nice perk where we can end school a little bit earlier, it's also nice that when you have one middle-school math teacher, or one music teacher, or one art teacher, it's hard to collaborate and develop yourself when you don't have a department. But being able to spend time outside of your contractual day, maybe identify people that you can work with, that's beneficial, and it's beneficial for us. It's hard to bring in people to support a single individual. So we found it quite useful. And again, we've continued to try to expand our standards-based grading and reporting to identify specific learning gaps for students. We have standards-based grading in grades kindergarten through 3rd grade. The second year after we implemented this, our goal and expectation was to expand this into 4th grade, 5th grade, and specials, and that's when we got hit by the pandemic. So it's an initiative that we'd like to regain some momentum on because we do feel as though it provides a lot of very valuable information to our parents. Presentation two is concluded unless you have questions, and then I'll jump right into the next one. Okay. Not hearing questions? Excuse me for just a minute. Okay, presentation three is on the new, newly-developed and recommended-to-the-board Comprehensive Health Curriculum. And I hadn't started on the last slide, so let's go back here. Again, apologize for the technical difficulties. Okay. So as most of you are aware, because we've been talking about it through several board meetings, the New Jersey Department of Education adopted brand-new comprehensive health and physical education standards in 2020. The reason that these standards have not been required to be implemented until this year is because they were pushed back because of the health crisis. The revised standards now need to be implemented and developed into curriculum for the start, or start-ish, of the 22-23 school year. The standards provide information on what students are expected to learn and guidance for individual districts to develop the curriculum that is age-appropriate and reflect values to the community. So the difference between standards and curriculum. Standards are required to embed into the curriculum, and it is what a district is required to cover within the school day or the school year. This is what we need to teach our students. Curriculum is how we are going to teach our students, the scope and sequence, and how we're going to deliver the instruction, and what resources we are going to use. So we, as a district, are able to have autonomy in the development of our curriculum. We are not able to change the standards in which we are required to teach. The Stanhope staff, including Ms. Di Cataldo, Mrs. Frank, Ms. Coppola, our guidance counselor, and Mrs. Ettinger, one of our PE teachers, have been working tirelessly since probably mid-August to put these standards together. A lot of really great discussion, a lot of feedback that we've been getting from other staff members and parents within the community have led to what I'm really proud to present and recommend to you, as a curriculum that's not dodging the standards, right? We've heard a lot of talk about districts in the county and beyond that are dodging them. A lot of talk about parents being asked to teach their kids these standards, or teaching these standards on the last day of school so that parents could have the option to just not send their kids. We didn't want to dodge it. We wanted to make sure that we implemented what we're expected to implement in a way that can celebrate the core values of our district, of our community, but also do so respectfully and with dignity as well. So I held a community forum, Mrs. Di Cataldo and I, on August 29th. It was a virtual forum to try to provide opportunities for any and all parents to participate and listen in, rather than limiting to those who can only come in person. We had a few nice questions. We were able to share some of the misconceptions that were in the media, but I also was able to share all, any and all changes from the previous standards to the current standards that we have to implement today. Okay. There we go. So our curriculum-writing process. We identified the people who had significant expertise in the areas in which we need to teach. So you've got our guidance counselor, right, who can teach about the social and emotional growth of our students. We have our teachers, who can cover most of the other nonsensitive health topics, and our school nurse, who can cover most of the topics that are related to the human reproduction and gender identity, et cetera. So those are the three people, the general ed teacher, the school nurse, and the guidance counselor, who are going to be responsible for delivering this instruction throughout the school year. We also are looking to continue partnerships with outside organizations who have been covering a lot of these standards from the get-go, before these standards were even changed. That's the Center for Prevention and NJCAP, the NJ Child Abuse Prevention Program, who have been coming in here and working with our kids for several years now. The developing of the scope and sequence to assign standards throughout the grade levels and the appropriate grade bands, to me, was the most important piece of this. Rather than sprinkling controversial or concerning topics throughout the entire year, our curriculum writers created three different units, and those three units are separated by who's going to deliver the information. Unit 1 will be delivered by the guidance department. Unit 2 will be delivered by our classroom teachers in K5, and Unit 3 will be delivered by our school nurse. The components within the curriculum, for those of you who either were able to view or weren't able to view, there's a unit overview for each of the three units within the grade band. This describes the content area, the title of the unit, the grade levels, and then a brief summary of the unit. Next is the scope and sequence. This is what topics are being covered during what week and to what grade level. As you scroll down and as you read further, that's where you get more detailed information, you can then see the standards for the grade band. This is listing the standards that are covered within each unit. The enduring understandings tell you the core ideas and topics that are being covered within each of the lessons, and the essential questions are the overarching questions that guide that lesson plan, that lead to the students' enduring understandings, that long-term understanding of the topic that you're trying to cover. The breakdown, as I already discussed, you have character education and development. That's by the guidance counselor. Health and wellness from our teachers. Personal growth and development from the school nurse. 6, 7th, and 8th grade students will have health curriculum and instruction. Six, seventh and eighth grade students will have health curriculum and instruction delivered by the physical education and health teachers, as we always have. Most of the topics in grades six, seven and eight have not really changed much. You know, that's when your traditional sex education begins, and that's the way that it started, you know, as long as that I've been here. Communication from the Department of Education on April 14th, there was a memo that was distributed clarifying some of the standards and some of the expectations. This was their attempt to address what they considered the misrepresentations of the content that were delivered through the media. And they identified three specific standards that they felt as though caused the most controversy and the most concern from parents in several communities. I'm going to address these three standards. I did so in the public health, in the health curriculum standards forum in August. And I may ask if there are no questions from the board now, maybe later if the community has questions, our curriculum writing experts to help me out here, Mrs. DiCataldo and Mrs. Frank. But the core idea to the left, this is something that has to happen by the end of grade two, states that every individual has unique skills and qualities, which can include the activities that they enjoy, such as how they may dress, their mannerisms and things that they like to do. The performance expectation, the actual standard states, to discuss the range of ways people express their gender and how gender role stereotypes may limit behavior. The areas that are highlighted just below tell you the grade level and the unit that this particular standard is going to be addressed. So this has to happen by the time students finish second grade. We will be covering this standard in second grade during unit three, which is at the end of the school year, right? It's the last, within the last few weeks of the school year. Again, the school nurse will be teaching this topic to our students. The enduring understanding that they will be looking to comprehend towards the end of the lesson is that students will discuss the range of ways that people express their gender and how gender role stereotypes may limit behavior. The questions that will be asked, what is the difference between gender and gender identity? How can we eliminate gender stereotypes? I think the most common example that we use for something like this, as something that would be in a classroom, is potentially holding up a doll and a football and asking the kids, which of these is the boy toy? Which of these is the girl toy, in air quotes? But then leading them to the discussion of, that doesn't really exist, you should be free to like what you want to like. If a boy wants to play with a doll, if a girl wants to play football, we shouldn't judge them, we should let them ultimately, you know, enjoy what they want to enjoy. So one of the very, very basic examples that have been used to explain how this will be addressed in a classroom. The learning objectives, so as you can see, this is session two of this unit. The teaching point is that students will discuss the range of ways people express their gender and how gender role stereotypes may limit behavior. So for those of you who are here for the public, if you do have questions or would like to make comment, we will have our first public session soon after the presentation. But during the presentation, any of the board, if you have any questions or any comment that you'd like to make to this point, please stop me.
When will this learning be effective?
So the health, once adopted tonight, our teachers and staff will begin implementing the health curriculum. Now remember, unit one will be delivered by the guidance counselor, Mrs. Coppola. That's more social, emotional wellbeing. Those are not the controversial topics that we've seen in the media. This is unit three. This is something that you're looking probably at around May, early June is when this specific standard will be addressed. Okay. The second of the three controversial standards that the state identified needs to be covered by the end of grade five. The core idea is that puberty is a time of physical, social and emotional changes. The performance expectation is to explain common human sexual development and the role of hormones. Now, it provides examples within the standard. However, it has been made clear that these examples are recommendations that do not need to be included in the actual instruction. Okay? So where it says EG, romantic and sexual feelings, masturbation, mood swings, timing of pubertal onset, those are suggested topics, they do not need to be in the curriculum. The enduring understandings that we have for this standard, which is unit three of fifth grade, is to explain the relationship between sexual intercourse and human reproduction, define sexual intercourse within the context of human reproduction, define what cells are involved in human reproduction, explain the relationship between sexual intercourse and human reproduction, correctly name at least two parts of the two sexual and reproductive systems, and describe functions of at least two parts of each of the two sexual and reproductive systems. And the essential question that will lead us to these understandings are, is what is the relationship between sexual intercourse and human reproduction? I know it's a lot to digest. Questions? And feel free to ask questions obviously later on.
So how will this be taught? Is this going to be part of regular class during the week or is it going to be like a one-time session?
So there are, I'd say what, between 20, 24 total weeks of instruction for health? So you're looking at one health period a week. It'll be a time that's designated during one of the days of the week. And as we've expressed, you know, throughout the, you know, the creation of the curriculum, there are opportunities and there will be opportunities for parents who aren't comfortable with their children to participate in this instruction, to ultimately opt out, right? With no penalty. We have, we've always had that opt-out in grades six, seven and eight because that's when we've addressed family, family life, reproduction. And we've had students, as long as I've been here, whose parents were not comfortable with them in that classroom setting and they've ultimately just gone to a different classroom while this instruction is going on. This is going to be the case now, grades kindergarten all the way through eighth grade. And what we were able to do is really lump those topics that some parents feel concerned about into that single unit so that those children can be opted out of the unit. Unit three for most grade levels, I think ranges from three weeks to five weeks in total, right? So you're talking, you know, a 40-minute period once a week from anywhere from three to five weeks, where if you're not comfortable with your child being in that classroom to discuss this, that's all that they ultimately would miss. You're not talking of daily instruction every single day throughout the week. You're not talking about a week's worth of not being in class, 40 minutes a week for three to five weeks.
Are the classes separated?
The classes are not separated. Okay. And then the next one. Sorry, clicker problems. Oh, this was the same one. And this was the teaching point for reproduction. Already went through that. The last one is by the end of eighth grade, that there are factors that contribute to making healthy decisions about sex. And the performance expectation is to define vaginal, oral and anal sex. The enduring understandings, as you can see to the left, is that students will understand the definition of sexual consent and that students will understand the definition of sexual agency. For the essential question, what makes up sexual, what makes sexual consent important? How can you communicate your sexual standards and limitations to your partner? And how can you establish healthy boundaries? The learning objectives is to teach about healthy boundaries, communication of needs, identification of standards, establishment of boundaries. And again, this is unit three of eighth grade. Now, the difference between the sixth, seventh and eighth graders and the elementary K through five students is that it's not spread out over an entire year. Our sixth, seventh and eighth grade students will have health every day for one quarter of the year, one marking period. However, this unit three will stretch out, it's typically over about a week's worth of instruction for 40 minutes that the students will engage in. Questions from the board?
Just a comment, it looks like an awful lot of work went into development of all of these, just, this is just a snapshot of the three, but have you looked through them?
Almost every day for like a month now, right? At least fine tuning and developing and it's a lot of work.
Some of them, I mean, it was, looking through it was 40 pages, 48 pages.
Again, you know, we felt very strongly, as we communicated as an administrative team, that we didn't want to dodge this, right? We don't want to run and hide from something that we have to do. We are obligated by these required state standards to deliver this instruction. We want to do so and we will do so tastefully, but we also provide opportunities for families who don't feel comfortable for their children to simply not participate. And it's not like it's, it's never been a scene for a child to not participate. They just don't go to that class at that time. Typically, they'll sit in my office or Ms. DiCataldo's office or with Ms. Coppola, you know, board game, hanging out, hot chocolate, whatever, you know? We don't want to obviously make it sound so fun that nobody's ever going to want to go to class and they're going to want to come. You know, but it's not like a child walks away feeling excluded because they weren't able to participate. We have students that don't participate in a wide variety of topics and activities for religious reasons as well. And again, it's done tastefully where they're excluded.
Real quick before you go on, on the eighth grade, as far as unit three, are the gym teachers also the same ones teaching that?
The phys ed teachers are teaching all of the topics in the health curriculum, as they always happen. And again, like I said, most of those topics have always been in this curriculum and they've always been taught to our sixth, seventh and eighth grade students. Okay. Important points to consider, again, parents have the opportunity to opt their children out. We are in the process of drafting new, newly created opt-out letters, just so that it speaks more specifically to the curriculum and to what they're opting out of and what process they need to do. I mean, the process is simple. You fill it out, you send it back in, we get it as administrators, we notify the teachers not to go through these units with the children who are opted out. But we're going to get those out relatively soon. Again, unit three is not going to be covered for most kids until the end of the year, with the exception of second marking period middle school students. That's, that's pretty much the gist of it. I hope you've had an opportunity to look at the curriculum. It was a lot, was a lot of work, it's a lot of information. But again, as you go back, unit three is really the area where most of the controversy stemmed from, you know, in the media and at the state level. Any other questions?
The board, anybody? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us back to our agenda. Next item on the agenda is the correspondence. For the board to note, the late afternoon, we got a letter. That's the number four. That's the old Stanhope Road acquisition. Remember several months ago, we had the discussion with the people wanting to buy the 40 acres that sit behind the school? They needed that for part of a development. They were supposed to come back with us at that time, within a week with a price and then it got to be two weeks, a month, three months. Well, yesterday we got the letter. And what we need to do is that was what we're going to discuss during our executive, is that letter and our directions that we need to take with that letter. Anyone else with questions on any of the correspondence? Number three, that was a variance within the 200 feet of school property. I went to town hall and it's on Spencer Street. It's, I'm sorry, it's opposite where Spencer Street is, opposite where Frank used to live. They built a beautiful house with all the stonework going up and not exactly sure what happened or why it happened, but the, the variances were exceeded in the area of impervious surface. So when they got all done, that, they exceeded the amount of impervious surface they had. And the variance was to put in a drywall. So they had to put a drywall and in the back, it has no effect on our property, that's why I went there and so we're in good shape there for that, for that variance. Anybody with questions on any of the other items? If not, let's move on to the superintendents report. Mr. Hegeman?
Walk to School Day was held a couple of weeks ago, although rainy, I still found it to be a great success. I wanted to thank formerly Transoptions, now Avenues in Motion, for providing such great free programs for us. Aside from the Walk to School Day, they also provide the Traffic Safety Town Program, where they teach our third through fifth grade students how to appropriately and safely cross the street, you know, when you're traveling throughout town, the safe practices to make sure that they, you know, don't put themselves at risk. And our Ready to Walk and Roll program is provided for our K-2 students. It was all provided outside, they still have specific COVID protocols. But the weather was beautiful when they had these programs, the kids really seemed to enjoy it. And again, we can't thank them enough for coming out. We are resubmitting for our silver, silver level status for New Jersey Safe Roots to School, and we expect to be able to get that designation late this winter. Our Veterans Day program, I still say, our finest program that we put together each year is going to be held on November 9th. That is the day, as it traditionally is, before the teachers convention weekend. All of you have invitations that were provided for you today. We hope that you're able to attend in person. However, we're excited and cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to broadcast the Veterans Day program to the community, which is exciting because we talk so much about this program and, you know, the parents and other community members don't really get to see it unless they're here as a board member, as a staff member, or as the family member of a veteran. So everybody will be able to see, we're very excited. Lenape loans us their band and their choir and they'll be here to perform, which is a highlight of the program. And we're very excited and hoping for some really good turnouts again. On Friday, September 23rd, our eighth grade students went up to Lenape for Future Patriot Field Day. This was, they were joined by Byram students and Net Kong eighth grade students. And again, very well put together, very nice for Lenape Valley administration and staff to put it together for our students. They had a lot of fun, they met some kids and they were able to connect with some upper classmen that'll hopefully serve as a mentor for them as they go up to the high school next year. Staffing update, we're still in need of paraprofessionals and substitutes like every other district in our county and our state. Everybody's short, it is a real struggle, but we are providing the support to our students that we need. We have some very dedicated substitute teachers and substitute staff that have been filling in while we're searching for permanent employees. So we're very lucky to have them. We are now whole with our custodial staff, as we have a new part-time evening custodian that started with us. And our child study team is now whole, as Mrs. Costanzo, our new LDTC, is with us. That's a shared service with Unity Charter School. She's here two days a week. We did receive unfortunately a resignation from our shared speech pathologist. So that will be the next position that we are quickly acting to fill. Next is a referendum update. So Gil, Debbie and I attended this seniors, is it seniors club? It's not a lunch, right? Seniors Club meeting and we spoke to some seniors in the Stanhope community. It was Stanhope, Byram and Net Kong, I even think of Pat Kong were there as well. We shared our reasons for referendum, we gave some key details. We asked a couple of questions about referendum and then a whole lot of other random questions beyond that, which we were happy to spend the time and enlighten some people on some of the things that we're doing. We, last Tuesday, we're presenting at the Stanhope Borough Town Council meeting. Mrs. Harold, Mr. Moscatello, Debbie, Mr. Clausen showed up right at the very end. Not missing anybody, right? No? Okay. So we presented to the town council. They seemed very receptive to our ideas for facilities upgrades, understanding of why we need to move forward with this referendum in order to make sure that our school remains healthy and safe. And it was nice to be able to really, they asked some real good questions, quality questions. And it was nice to engage with them. and it was nice to engage with them. We are expecting to finalize hopefully this week or early next week, dates for formal presentations on the referendum. The date that I'd like to propose for the board to consider honestly is our November Board of Education meeting. I think it would be nice to open up with that presentation, to give as much detail as possible. That would then allow people to ask questions at public session and then I would, I would like and I'd recommend to then provide a follow-up, maybe less of a presentation, but opportunities for people to ask questions, once they've had an opportunity to, to digest the information that we provide at the initial presentation. So almost like a, an informal presentation with Q and A on a different night just before the referendum. Mr. Lulama and I were speaking earlier today, we're hoping by November first-ish, early November, to have a specific page dedicated for the referendum where we can add some of the resources that we're using to get the information out. We will be broadcasting and recording the presentation if it is at the board meeting or whenever that is, so that we can post it to our website. I've begun putting together a tri-fold brochure with a QR code that'll bring you directly to the website and all of that information. So we are, we're getting very close, we're, we're full steam ahead and I think you're going to start seeing a lot of things just kind of fall into place. A lot of the work that's being done right now is behind the scenes type stuff to just kind of get us ready to go full steam ahead. And once we, we solidify the dates for presentations, we're going to put together an ad for the Township Journal so that, you know, everybody in the community, whether or not they're affiliated right now with the school, will have an opportunity to, to know when this is happening and they'll be invited to come. The last piece that's not on the agenda, just forgot to put it on there, every month we report for HIV and suspensions. We've had zero suspensions since our last meeting, one HIV investigation, which was unfounded. Questions?
Anybody? Questions?
For the referendum, are you sending that brochure to the parents at home?
So the brochure, so this is going to be a physical brochure, it's going to be a tri-fold. We'll also have one electronically that we're going to share out, which will have all of the same information, but the purpose of the tri-fold will be to target, target the community members who aren't getting communication from us in the school, right? Like we did when we initially distributed our newsletter, we went from throughout the town to different, to the, to the Crunch Fitness, to the hardware store and we asked permission to, to put out the newsletters. We plan to do the same thing with the trifolds, the post office, just to try to get the information out to as many people as possible.
And if you, I guess if you have, I live in a pretty closed community, there's like sixteen homes on my block, I, you can go down, put them on the doorsteps and invite people for questions and things of that nature, just go ahead.
So as, as board members, if that's, if that's something that you'd like to do, if you'd like to distribute to friends and family members, neighbors, people throughout the community, just let us know and we'll print as many as, as you'd like. We'll print them, we'll get them folded and, and, you know, get them to you so that you can distribute if, if that's something that you'd like to do.
Anybody else with questions? Thanks Steve. Debbie?
The convention for school boards is next week. I'm happy to say that pretty much all of us are going, which is, was a great turnout, whether they're coming with the, with us or going to be there with their own district, which is nice. If anybody has any questions about what happens when you get there or you need any information about any of it, please don't hesitate to ask, but we are all set and squared away to go. Speaking on the referendum, there has, it has come to my attention that there are some grants out there right now for HVAC, for some plumbing that I started applying for to hopefully offset some of those costs. Obviously not a promise that we're going to be getting those funds, but I, I am looking for any avenue that we can, that we can take. We don't have to take as much money from the taxpayers, still, still looking. It is the open enrollment month for healthcare. I did want everybody to know that in the previous years, the healthcare costs have gone down and this year they are going up. We did expect them to go up, they're going up by about fourteen percent. We did budget for that money, but they are going up for that. Because of the increase in the healthcare on the state level, I have put out to Brown and Brown for them to send out to insurance, other insurance companies to see if they can't do better for us. The insurance will obviously have to be the same, if not better, as far as the policies are concerned, but I'm certainly hoping to save some money for everybody. And the audit is underway and actually almost done, which is lovely. They're coming back in on Friday to square, wrap things up, which always makes me happy when they're done. And I, something I did not put on here, but I'd like to discuss during Old Business is a, just a new thing about the Linden Avenue sale. Don't worry, it's still going on, but I want to bring it up during Old Business. Anybody have any questions for me?
Anybody?
All right.
Okay, curriculum update?
I just have that there's several curriculum updates, revisions that are on the agenda that I'm recommending today. Wanted to thank sincerely all the staff members that participated in this process from the summer and, and through, a lot of time, a lot of effort that went into it. One of the things that, that we're looking to do and, and it's reflected in, in the proposed district goals, is to move from the Rubicon Atlas Platform to a more user-friendly and, and parent-accessible Google Doc, Google Drive platform. I personally really appreciate the new template, I find it easier to identify and locate elements within the curriculum and, and, and I think that once they're all transferred and they're all built, it's going to be nice to be able to access those links right on the website without having to pay a thousand dollars to do so, which is what Rubicon was charging us. We have Mrs. DiCattolo here, is there anything you want to add? Putting you on the spot? No is okay. Nice job.
Anybody with questions for Steve on curriculum? All right, that takes us to our committee reports. Mrs. Harold, Personnel, Curriculum, School Climate and Culture?
Pretty much say Steve just covered that. Really, the only thing is, I don't know if you had a chance to read through some of the different curriculums, but the layout is really easy to pick things out. In fact, I did and then I asked questions, so thank you very much, Mrs. DiCattolo, for answering my questions because that helped me when I was looking through it, so I appreciate it. But I found it a lot more user-friendly to look at it, so I definitely recommend that we approve the curriculum changes and everything and that's pretty much it.
Could I just add one small piece of that? Piece that I missed. To me, the greatest benefit of doing, of building curriculum the way that we're looking to build it right now is within the Google Doc platform, we can make edits in real time. Teacher reviews something and says, you know, this didn't flow, I'd like to change the scope and sequence, you know, of this unit, can we make these changes? We make the changes in the document and then the idea is that we're now reapproving this curriculum every single year, so that rather than having a three to five-year window where you're doing a curriculum overhaul, you know, the work is done within the school year. You just have to now take that document, put it into a PDF, put it into the folder of approved curriculum, approve it and we're good to go. So although there's a lot of time and a lot of, of, of district money being spent on this process right now, long-term I see it as a significant cost savings.
What was the curriculum before?
So it, it's not that the curriculum was necessarily different, it was housed in a different platform. It was housed using Rubicon, which is a lot of, a lot of clicking, you know, a lot of, you know, opening dropdown boxes and, and to be honest with you, it just wasn't organized in a user-friendly way. It took our staff quite a bit of time to get used to it and eventually we did get used to it, but for that, us to then pay a thousand dollars to make it accessible for parents who, to be quite honest with you, are going to be super frustrated with it because they're not going to know how to find anything, it just seemed wasteful. The Rubicon program, aside from the cost to get it on our website, I think we're paying like forty-five hundred dollars a year to house our curriculum within. So we're going from forty-five hundred dollars with an additional expense to get it on the website to free. So again, one of, I think we're getting a better product for a lot less money.
Comment I like to make is looking, after looking through that curriculum, more in-depth on the health one, was that you get a great appreciation for what we're actually instructing the young people on. There's a lot of content in there, there's a lot of great things that young kids should know and, and I'm removing the whole sex part of it. I'm just talking about trusted adults, emotional issues, who to go to, safety, it's, it's just wonderful and it's very clear. You don't have to read between the lines, it was very clear throughout the document. And I found the same with going through some of the other curriculums. I spent a little bit more time in math than the other ones and I thought the math, when you look at what we are instructing as basic eighth grade math, it's pretty, it's pretty stringent, okay? It's not the algebra, but yet when you look at it, at first I thought I was reading the algebra curriculum when I was first going through it, but when you see what's going on there, it's quite, it's quite intense curriculum, but it's easy to follow and you can see it developing from sixth, seventh and eighth grade, you can see the developments. So I found it just very, very informative as to what's happening in our schools and I think that's going to be great when that's on the site, that a parent can open it up and see exactly the same thing. They can see what's happening in the year they're in now and what's going to happen next year and how they relate. And I think that's, that's a bonus for a parent and I think it's a bonus for us as a school to have parents to have that kind of accessibility. Anyone else comments on curriculum culture? Thank you. Next is Business Services, Facilities, Technology. Mrs. Schorfstein?
Sure, so we did cover a lot of what we talked about in committee, we'll have an update on Linden Avenue shortly. The cafeteria staff, we continue to move forward, things are getting much smoother with the cafeteria, cafeteria staff, students are getting their lunch faster, so I think things are calming down there. We'll talk about the referendum as well a little bit later, we talked about it quite a bit already, moving forward with that. Facilities fees for weekend use of our facilities are going up by about ten dollars, from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars to cover costs of having people in the building to clean the facilities, so, and that is only on weekend coverage, not during normal time. And then the other thing, which is in everybody's agenda, is district and board goals. You know, while I think each of our committee agendas talked about district goals, we do have board goals in there as well, so just want to make sure we all cover those and understand what we're committing to.
Anyone with questions? Next is Policy and Communications Committee, Mr. Clausen?
There's nothing new in policy, no new policy.
It was great, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was like, whoa, no, no policy alerts. That was, that was wonderful. So we, no, I guess we're light on questions there. Okay, next is Sussex County Ed Services Commission, which is my report. Very similar to what a typical month is for us, I had attended personnel meetings, finance meetings. We did have our principal left in August and we are now at the interview stages, we're starting to interview candidates, hoping to bring someone on starting January first if possible, so that's been a little time-consuming. Programming in the school is going well and enrollment is, is strong. Highlight is that our Project Search is really doing well. The CEO of Newton Hospital in collaboration with the Human Resources Department of the Hospital, they're trying to create some different departments for the young kids to get into and that will increase the rotations. For those of you who are, Project Search is a, a program at Sussex Ed Services that kids who have already graduated from high school, they're, they're, they've completed their years, but they can be in the school up until twenty-one. It's the school for disabled kids. And Project Search works with a, an employer, which happens to be Newton Hospital, and our kids get trained at Newton Hospital, they spend a full day there, just like they're going to work every day, but all of our instruction takes place there for transitions into the workplace. And it's, we've had a hundred, the last three years we've done it, we've had a hundred percent placement in jobs and it's not only at Newton Hospital and it's not just the janitor and it's just not the person serving the food. We have people working in surgery, we have handicapped kids working in x-ray, in radiology. As a matter of fact, one of the young girls that, that's there just passed the test to be an assistant in the radiology department and it, it helps the community out significantly in that it takes young people, which sometimes in the past ended up in group homes or, or unemployable or now employable, with jobs that they can maintain a self-sufficient lifestyle. And it's just been magnificent for a lot of these kids and Newton Hospital has been phenomenal. They love the kids, they love the programs, they go out of their way. The CEO of the hospital is intricately involved in the development of the program and, and wants more. He's looking for more rotations up there, so we are very, very pleased with that, with that program. Next, anybody with questions about Sussex Ed Services? Next is Board President's Report. Steve, you just mentioned I attended the meeting with the senior citizens, I attended the meeting at the Town Council, both which were met with, at first, when the students you started mentioning referendum, you get a huh, you know, one of those kinds of things, but the senior citizens were wonderful, they asked some great questions and I don't know, I felt a little bit of, I felt some, a positive vibe in there and then, you know, they got off on all the off topics and we just entertained those for a while and it was a great meeting. Town Council was the same way, although I think they didn't have the awe, I think they were really glad we were doing something. They, I think they also see us now as the center of the community, they see Stanhope Schools as a positive factor in our community and as a matter of fact, there's some feeling that it is now drawing people to the community because of the school system. So we've been fortunate enough to have a great working relationship with the Town Council and that has proved to be very fortuitous for both, for both of us, for them and for us, just working together and doing some things together that has helped the school and has helped the community through them. We, we, we're clearing up some land issues now, I, I mentioned the one in the, the variance that we just did across from Spencer Street and now this other one with the property behind the school. The, the forty acres we're looking at to sell, thirty-four or thirty-six of those acres are wetlands, I, I remember the exact number.
So we think.
So we think, there's like thirty-four of them are, are wetlands. The most important thing is the piece of property is totally landlocked. So to me, to, to, to sell off landlocked wetlands is, is a pretty good thing to get, get off our backs, so we're looking to move forward with that. Anyone with questions? Okay, that takes us to public session number one, that's agenda items. Please, anybody making a statement, try and keep your comments to five minutes and if you're representing any group of ten, of ten or more people, if you could just let us know the name of the group that you're representing, that would be helpful. And now open it up to the public. And we are not turning out the lights in the back, that's, that's, that, that happens automatically, you have to stand up and wave your arms every now and then. Are there anything online, do you know?
The people that are viewing online, it's only viewing, it's only broadcasting.
Okay.
So
Yes.
Before you speak, Mrs. Valardo, you just have to press the red button, the light, and once it's white, people can hear you.
Hi, my name's Anna Sasha Valardo, I live at Five Lenape Drive in Stanhope. Couple of questions regarding the comprehensive health curriculum. I understand that it is state mandated, but I was kind of curious in how you guys are going to represent certain general content within these classes, within these units as we're discussing, as far as worksheets goes, as far as videos goes, things of that nature. My second question is, does this have any effect on books shown in their actual classes as well as books that are going to be represented in that library?
Gil, Mrs. DiCattolo's our expert. If you don't mind, Gil, Mrs. DeCataldo's our expert, and Ms. Frank, if it's okay for them to respond. You just got to step up to the mic so people at home can hear you.
The curriculum that's being implemented in the younger grades, there's things like Kids Health, we have Brain Pop Junior. They're all resources that are geared developmentally to kids that age, if we do choose video. We haven't chosen any texts yet that would represent any of the information. We also have, it's called the Three Rs Curriculum. A lot of schools in the state of New Jersey are using Three Rs because they do provide lessons and materials. We've actually gone through and picked out what's appropriate, we deem appropriate for our community, based on those things. And we're going to be supplementing too, as well. Like, one of the, is it the second grade?
The diagram.
Diagram. And then there's this whole colors thing where the kids have to pick, like, with the gender identity. Like, what are boy colors? What are girl colors? Why are those boy and girl colors? Yeah, society sometimes says it there, but that doesn't mean that they aren't. You know what I mean? Those kind of things. But no texts have been chosen. I know that there are texts out there. There's texts that are already used. There's a book about crayons, and all the different colors of crayons, and how they can all be accepted in your crayon box. What other texts are there? There's a bunch. But we'll be weeding through those to see, you know, what we will use and what we won't use. But Three Rs is a good start to look at. And we did do a thorough check in that. Yes. We took a lot out. Any other questions? No?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, that closes our first public session. Next is Travel and Workshops. Anybody have questions? Not hearing any questions. Moving on to Minutes for Approval. These are the minutes from the September 21st, 2022 regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? Any changes, edits, deletions? This is a voice vote. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Anyone abstain? Thank you. Next is our Administrative Action Items. That's items one through six. Is there a motion?
Seven is on, one through seven.
One through seven. I must have a, this is the one.
Seven item is the district goals, and six item is the board goals.
I know, but what I'm saying, the one, the copy I was using was the one I printed during the week. So it's not the latest. Travel workshops, minutes, one through seven. I'm sorry. Administrative items, one through seven. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on any of the items, one through seven? Everyone okay with the goals?
My only question was, it does feel like for number, district goal number two and three, it feels like they're not time-bound. So you are saying three to five years, and then again, two to three years. But I am confused on which years are you aiming to accomplish some of those items.
The goal is for all of the items to be accomplished within that timeframe. Some of them may be accomplished within year one, some may be within year two. And part of the CSA evaluation process that you'll begin engaging, I believe, late March, early April, is that the board will collectively determine whether or not you feel as though enough progress is being made towards those goals throughout the course of the year. And that's ultimately how I'm evaluated as the CSA. So, you know, after year one, after year two, as a board, if you feel as though that not adequate progress has been made, that's something that needs to be addressed within the CSA evaluation. And at that point, we need to discuss collectively as a group what we need to do to make sure that we make more progress towards the goals. So that's, yes, they're stretched out over a period of time. And the expectation is that within that timeframe, all of those subcomponents of the goals are going to be completed.
And also, some of the goals in there, there's a goal that needs to be done first before that one can be done. You know, some of them may be sequential as you look through them.
Yeah.
So it's a bulk of time to complete a group of objectives under that goal. It's a group of time. And that's, take us through two or three years of that goal. Anyone else? Okay, not hearing any other questions. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Choquette?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Scherf, and Mrs. Scherfstein?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Moscatello, Mrs. Scherfstein, I'll combine there. Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Okay. Next, Education Action Items, one and two. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
No discussion on this? Okay. Anybody with questions then? Not hearing any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Choquette?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scherfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next, Personnel Action Items, one through four. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Who's the main basketball coach?
Mrs. Ettinger, our phys ed teacher.
Cool. I might need some lessons.
She's been, she started as the head boys' basketball coach when she started here, and then transitioned to the head girls' coach.
Any other questions?
I just have one. Number two, what does CEAS stand for?
Certificate of Eligibility with Advanced Standing.
Thank you.
Trying to put me on the spot, aren't you?
No. It really wasn't.
I know what it is, but I couldn't remember the language.
But you said that well.
Any other questions? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Choquette?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scherfstein?
Yes, but abstain on three.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next, Business Services Action Items, Agenda Items, one through 15. Well, you outdid yourself this week, didn't you?
I'm an overachiever.
Overachiever.
Motion.
Second.
Give a second to review it a little bit. Anybody have questions? A lot of information here.
The only question I have for number 13 through 15, some of those payments seem like they date back to August 30th. So they haven't been paid since?
No, they've definitely been paid. But sometimes when we go back and look at where the money is coming from, we are able to reallocate it from a different spot. So they've been paid, we might just make the change in our own software. Okay, gotcha.
Anybody else with questions? Not hearing any? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Choquette?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scherfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Okay, that takes us to New Business. Anyone with New Business? Did you want to approach something where that was Old Business?
That's Old Business.
Anyone with New Business? Okay. Anyone with Old Business?
Yes. I do have old. The attorneys for the sellers needed some more information on our resolutions. Our attorneys have responded already, but they would like to have some extra time to just cross some Ts, dot their Is. So they're asking for a couple extra weeks before they close. The buyer already agreed, but we don't need to do another resolution. If you agree, I just need to let them know if the board does agree to extend the closing date.
Without, I don't know if there's any confidentiality involved. What are, what kind of Is are they worried about? What kind of Tees?
Actually, they were looking for the exact amount. And they're looking for all the things that are already in the resolution. So our attorneys just sent them back the resolutions they already had, and asked them to reread it. I didn't know how else to say that.
The resolution has to match the contract. So they're going through it to just make sure that everything we approved matches line by line in the contract.
Well, they were saying actually also that we were missing information in our resolutions, but we weren't. Which is why the attorneys just resend the resolutions that we already have. But if that's what they need, and it's, to me, it's...
But is that, I guess the question I'm asking, then, hearing that, is it weeks' work? Or is it a week worth, one week's worth of work to compare?
I'm not them, and I don't know what's on their plate, and what other things that they have to do. They could, you know, have five other things before hours where they're saying, I need to take care of that, and then I can get to that. So that's where the holdup is. I didn't ask that. I just said, I'm okay with it. Only because...
We don't need a board motion to extend that?
We don't. I need approval from the board. I don't need another resolution or motion. As per the attorney, I spoke with her today.
Are they looking for, are they looking for a time? In other words, two weeks, three weeks?
They're not. They're just asking if it's okay. And I think that based on the information we give them, that our attorneys give them, will also determine the amount of time that they will need.
So we're going to give an approval without an end date, is what I'm saying?
Well, they don't have an end date without an approval. So they, based on what they're telling me. But they just said a couple of weeks, and I'm confident. And the other reason why I'm confident that I'm not going to, that I was confident not jumping all over it, is because I know that, I know that the buyers are interested in, are very eager to purchase. So they don't want to drag their feet. They want to get in there. And it's their money, and I don't want to rock that boat, since we're so lucky to be selling it.
Do we give them like a soft deadline or something?
Yeah, we could.
Before the end of the year? We'd like to get this wrapped up before the holidays?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm thinking the first week in November. They said a couple weeks. I took it as two. And just so you know, the email was asked of me to ask you guys at 4 o'clock today. This is not information that I've been sitting on. This is just brand new, coming in hot off the presses. This is what we need. What do you think? I can obviously give them a deadline, but I couldn't speak on behalf of the board because I can't do that.
I'm glad. I'm glad. Open it up. Mattia?
I'm comfortable with it.
Jen?
If your recommendation is to extend by a couple weeks, I support that.
I like John's idea, the soft, soft.
Yeah, I can absolutely make the recommendation. But again, I don't speak on behalf of the board.
I'd like to close by the end of the first week in November.
You got it.
Put it on us, yeah. The board would really like resolution by...
Yeah, I have to put it on you. So I definitely won't do that.
And there's nothing the board needs to do for this to close. Because I don't want to go past the November board meeting or something like that, you know? I mean, where we have to wait till December or something.
We will need to approve the close once it comes up. But we were already passed that anyway, because the close was October 24th. So it's still going to close, they're still going to sign, and then at our next board meeting, which would have happened in November anyway, we'll approve that.
Okay.
So we're not missing any dates.
We could put that in there, right? We'd like to have it approved by our November board meeting or something like that. Because it gives them the time, and also gives us time.
I'm still going to go, if you guys are comfortable with the first week in November.
That's good. That's good. That's two plus weeks.
Yeah, that's exactly.
By the end of the first week. What is it? Next, 31st is a week from, or is a week from Monday, right?
It's a week from Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that gives them plenty of time to look over the resolutions. We already sent them. Do anything else that they need to do.
And there's no, there's no holidays in there, right?
Not in between.
Veterans Day is...
Trick or treating.
Trick or treating, that's right. Trick or treating. Monday Night Football.
That's always there.
That's always there.
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So you're going to go ahead with that, and we don't need to vote?
We do not. I just needed your consent.
We got it. We got it.
Can I mention something else?
Sure.
The sample polling ballots have come in, and I have copies, if you guys are interested in seeing them for the referendum. I do have copies of those, so we can take a look at those after.
Okay.
Just saying.
All right. That takes us to Public Session Number Two, for non-Agenda Items. Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
So with our new platform where we are broadcasting these meetings, I invited anyone from the public who's not able to attend to submit comment or question to me by email or to the board by email prior to 3 o'clock on the afternoon of the meeting. I did receive a question from Mr. Eric Mates of Stanhope that I would like to read into the minutes. And if it's okay, I'll briefly respond. He asked, through email, if there is an approximate breakdown available representing the desired bond amount being discussed under the pending December referendum. For example, anticipated costs for AC system versus STEM lab equipment versus roofing. I shared with him, and I requested that Debbie add this as an attachment to reflect in the minutes, just a breakdown of the cost for the referendum that we received from our architect. It lists a description of what the project is, the units per project, the cost per unit, the total cost, the architect engineer fee, the bonding fee, excuse me, contingency, and then the total amount. So Debbie and I spoke. We felt very comfortable sharing this with the public. This is all information that we're going to be sharing through our presentation in November anyway. You've all seen this. You've had this document in front of you. But I've just asked Debbie to also reflect it in the minutes.
Okay. That takes us to the close of Public Session Number Two. And now, that takes us into the Executive Session. Is there a motion to go into Executive?
Motion.
Second.
Be it resolved that the Stanhope Board of Education adopts the following resolution: Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the Stanhope Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Stanhope Board of Education, County of Sussex, and the State of New Jersey, that a closed session of this Board of Education, where the public shall be excluded, will be held at this time for the purpose of personnel. I thought that was business.
It's business.
It's business.
It's supposed to be business.
For the purpose of business. Be it further resolved that the action of the board with regard to the above entitled matter shall be discussed, I'm sorry, shall be disclosed to the public at a later date, and to the extent that the same is not presidential to the interest of the parties involved, and would not result in a possible invasion of their right to privacy. Again, this is a voice vote. All those in favor of going into Executive, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No. Opposed, no? Abstained? Okay, we are now in executive, but under this model, we have to leave the room, correct?
Yes, I have something prepped for you in the other room. So this is our last order of business, we expect after executive to simply adjourn. So you're welcome to stay and hang out for a while, uh, but if you leave, it was nice to see you. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, she had to go pick up her daughter.
Okay.
You need to, uh, put your mics on.
Put your mics on.
I need to have a motion to re-enter public.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, we're back in public session. We have one order left on the agenda. A motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Wait a minute, wait. Who got the motion? Jonathan, you're all right. And Jen, you second, okay.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourned in the meeting say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody abstained. We're done. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dick, you want me to bring you coffee in the morning?